Okay, I think we're ready. Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on September the 10th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom in the Brazos County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is Infication Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. Texas Flag Commissioner Condon will leave us.
Almighty God, I want to thank you, thank you, Lord, for the lives that we enjoy, for the community we live in, what a special place it is. Thank you also that whether people agree or disagree, that people care enough to make our community better. Bless everyone who comes into these meetings and gives their input, bless those that serve this county, our big employee staff and all the work they do. Lord, help us to come closer to you, each and every one of us, so that we might be closer to one another in you, and that your glory might reign in all that we think, say, and do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is Call for Citizens and Our Concerns, and I've got a few here. Is that Ron San Torisera? Oh, there you are. Couldn't recognize that name. Go ahead.
It's all right, Judge, nobody ever gets that name right. I totally get it. Thank you, Judge Commissioners. A couple of years ago, when I first became the Crime Stoppers Coordinator, I was at a conference and came across, for the first time, a vehicle that was all decked out with Crime Stoppers, a rolling advertisement, patrol car kind of thing. And I wanted to thank you, the Commissioners in particular, Chief Martinez, for your efforts. When I got back, the bright idea to put that car together and worked out the deal. It's unfortunate that it's gone to, it has to go to auction now. It is getting old. But that said, Braz Valley gives us coming up. It will make enough to replace that. But all the effort that you and the Commissioners, the attorneys put in, Chief, you and the Sheriff, your work in trying to donate that, it didn't work out. But there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to try to make things happen. And from all of us at Crime Stoppers, we appreciate all the effort. And just wanted to say thank you, and thank you, Chief and Sheriff. We learned a lot with that, and good things to come for Crime Stoppers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks, Rob. Sterling Morrison.
Just wanted to speak in favor of the new tax rate in Brazos County. I believe it's essential for maintaining and improving vital public services, including infrastructure, emergency response, and community programs. The proposed one cent increase is a modest adjustment that ensures that the county can meet the growing demands of its residents without compromising service quality. By voting in favor, the Commissioners will demonstrate their commitment to a strong and thriving community. This investment today will yield long-term benefits for Brazos County citizens. I'd like to bring this home to a real-life example. For me, this last Sunday, I had a brush fire at my house, and within, I would say, eight minutes of that phone call, seven minutes, I had South Braz Valley Fire Department there extinguishing a fire that went beyond my property line toward the adjoining property, extinguished it very fast, protected my home, protected the property around me, and I'm very grateful and very thankful. And I believe that with the tax increase, we'll continue to provide our first responders with what they need to help the community and residents like myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zachary Johnson.
Sorry, we didn't get signed up for the public speaking earlier, so I'm speaking now. My name's Zachary Johnson. As a lifelong member, resident of Brazos, Bryan College Station in Brazos County, I personally have seen the growth of Brazos County over the last 20, 32 years. There's much more to Brazos County than just the cities of Bryan College Station and Texan University that are, and what they're accountable and responsible for, and that's why our county Commissioners, what they're here for. As a resident of Precinct Three, I voted for Nancy Berry to be my county commissioner based on her background and years of knowledge in the field to do what is right and best for my precinct. Because of this, I support Nancy Berry and the other Commissioners that are in favor of this 1% tax increase. I trust their judgment as our county Commissioners and that they are looking out for what is currently best for our county, while also looking into the future of how the funds could potentially alleviate other issues that we haven't seen yet. Like many others, I am personally not a huge fan of taxes, but I know that this tax, a very small one at that, is to help and support and grow our local county that we all love and live in, and that is something I can be in favor of. I know the county, the 1% is on the value of our house. I feel like the County Appraisal District serves a big issue. They're always raising our values. I don't think that's the County Commissioners, the County Commissioners' fault. I think that's more of an issue with them than the Commissioners themselves.
Okay, thank you. Michael Inzaldua.
Again, just like the previous guys, I'm basically in favor of the 1% tax increase. It's very small, as I've mentioned. In order to stay in here in Brazos County and keep everything as nice and as well as it has been, I think it's a very, it is a very small amount to raise it up. I didn't start a fire recently, so I don't really have that experience, but yeah, no, I just, I agree in it, and I think it's something to help Brazos County keep staying positive and moving forward with all the growth that's coming here. We need to stay ahead of things and not get behind the eight ball, so, you know, I believe it's, I'm for it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Cindy Wiley.
So, there's a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention that I didn't earlier. There's a report done by Texas Real Estate Center. I mean, it's A&amp;M, sorry. It's A&amp;M, they did an analysis of the housing industry in Brazos County in particular. In January of 2024, when our properties are appraised, there was only 149 sales on record, which is down 17.68%. And that's the year-over-year percentage. The dollar volume year-over-year is down 19.58%, and that was January 2024. So, the housing market has taken a hit. It's bouncing around quite a bit because interest rates are high. Music free. So, I guess I get to speak longer than four minutes.
Yeah, the timekeeper just went out the door.
Yeah, I know. And I don't have mine up here. And, you know, I appreciate the people, the three people that stood up here and spoke, although I think, I would question whether they've actually looked into the budget and seen the different expenses and revenue streams that are coming in. Because, not to sound rude, but as we have had to tighten our budget, the expectation is that you guys tighten your budget. All the services that they talk about that we might lose if you don't get the .4197, I think that's a misunderstanding. Those services are going to continue because that's your responsibility to make sure that the public is safe and secure. And again, I just ask that, that at least if you don't take Nina's rate, the .413500, then the other option would be a no new revenue rate. And that would be just in light of helping protect the people's wallet, every individual. So, to look from the big picture to the micro picture, it's individually people. I personally am going to sell one of my homes and buy a home in Ohio because it's cheaper for me, property taxes, in Ohio than it is here in Brazos County. And I've liquidated four homes because of the property taxes here. And I've never shared that with you guys, but that's, that's the truth. It's too expensive. I have to charge a rate that is astronomical, 1,900 bucks for a 1,400 square foot house? That's stupid. Who can afford that kind of stuff? Anyway, that's pretty much it. Although I do have this piece of paper from the National Low Income Housing Coalition, and this is, this is Michael McCall's district, specifically his district. This is current, this is 2024. And it says, again, you know, my greatest concern with this community is that we're becoming a community of apartment dwellers because people can't afford homes. And renters are up, renters make up 33% of all households in McCall's district. And there is a severe shortage. Also, there's a severe burden, 81% have a severe burden with income at or below the annual median income. I mean, this stuff is, you know, it's unique. We're in unique times right now, and I think that has to be very much taken into, into a factor. And so, I ask that you not do, a no new revenue, I mean, that you not raise it to .4197.
Okay, thank you. Julie Schultz.
Thank you for having us today. I appreciate the time to be able to speak to you guys, and I appreciate all your service. With that said, my name is Julie Schultz, and I live in Precinct One in Brazos County and have been a member of the community for over 50 years. And yeah, I've seen a lot of growth, including the, our business, which I, we own, and the structure that it's in. We do a lot of new construction-type work, so I see what the issues are. I will tell you that my taxes are not frozen. I am not a big fan of tax increases, but I do think what you're proposing is a moderate increase, which, as Mr. Watson said previously, creates a more financially healthy budget for us moving forward. It looks ahead of what might come, and we've seen those things happen in the past with energy issues and COVID, and sometimes there are expenses that come up that are unknown. I don't think going out and borrowing money at a bank to cover those is the answer. I do like my county services. I want you to continue to be able to fix my roads in my precinct and have law enforcement on the ready should I need them. And I, as I live in College Station, I will say, I think you're making better decisions than my, your counterparts there. They're choosing to buy trees instead of police officers, which I'm not supporting. I like trees like everybody else. My dad was a forester, but I think that you have to spend the money wisely. One of the things I didn't mention earlier was this housing shortage, and I agree that it's a big problem. I do think it's bigger than this entity, except for reducing fees and things like that that prohibit building, increasing people's ability to create more houses, I think would help. Having more inventory makes it less expensive to be able to get one of those houses. And we do have a problem with young families not being able to afford homes. That is a secondary issue that can be discussed at a later date. I do think that you need to do your job and show up to work every day and show up to court meetings every day. I do have issue with a member of the court that is being disrespectful to other people that have spoken. I think we all deserve respect from not just the folks that are in the audience, but also the court as well. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clayton Watson.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I've already spoken just a little bit ago this morning, but I do think it bears repeating in the regular meeting. So, if you'll allow me, I'm going to try to do my best to touch back through the key points, maybe mocking a couple of them out of there. But anyhow, my name is Clayton Watson. I'm here to address the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2025. Please excuse the brevity of my statements.
Judge, I'm going to adjourn myself for just a moment. I'll be back after he's through talking.
Okay.
Does my time get refunded for that?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, excuse me for the brevity of my statement. Fine details are the enemy of time, and I'm doing my best to fit within the allotted time that I do have. Briefly, I hold a bachelor's degree in economics and dual master's degrees in business administration and commercial real estate finance from Texas A&amp;M. I'm the owner of an independent real estate brokerage. I am also a licensed property tax consultant. Prior to founding AG3 Properties, I worked in the banking industry for many years, both commercial and residential. I currently serve as the Vice Chair of the City of Bryan Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm also an elected precinct chair for the Brazos County Republican Party. I share all of this only to establish that I'm well-versed in the effects of population growth, the ad valorem taxing system, operational budgeting, and fiscal conservatism. Over the past 10 days, I have reviewed every minute of the video transcripts of workshops and Commissioner Court meetings concerning the proposed budget and tax rate. I've also spent multiple more hours analyzing the budget myself and reaching out to our Budget Officer, Nina Payne, to ask questions, make sure that I fully understand the nuance of everything that is there. Initially, I wanted to speak on technical matters such as marginal versus structural, you know, structural needs for a growing community, the appropriate use of debt, whether capital projects like the medical examiner's office are essential or extravagant. Also, this last year, we've learned that there's about $10 million in deferred maintenance for the Expo Center. Do we want to continue supporting our children, allowing for, you know, the promotion of agriculture and things such as that? That is only one asset that the county owns. We own many other properties, and what other deferred maintenance is coming down the pike? Now, I will say that I'm not going to speak to those technical matters because I think that y'all discussed them sufficiently in the workshop. Instead, I want to address the two dominant perspectives that have emerged. First, Judge Peters, I commend you for your commitment to fiscal conservatism and for recognizing that a true conservative position doesn't always equate to lower taxes. Managing debt responsibly and ensuring adequate funding for growing pains are essential. However, it is the duty of this court to ensure that the citizens, or excuse me, to ensure that any increased funding comes with stringent oversight. While I know that our budget development process is in capable hands, there's always the risk of unnecessary expenses finding their way into the budget. I'll have something on this in a moment. To Commissioner Aldrich's position, while I do respect his dedication to accountability, I believe that his approach is misguided. In 2022, when then-Commissioner Aldrich and former Commissioner Ford failed to show up and vote on the tax rate, the county was forced to adopt a no new revenue rate, which resulted in the reduction of revenue of $12.4 million versus the then-proposed tax rate. Here we are two years later, considering a proposed tax rate and a no new revenue rate with a differential of only $6.9 million. Holding everything else equal, had Commissioners Aldrich and former Commissioner Ford done their job, not only could this court have adopted this year's no new revenue rate, it could have proposed a total rate of 0.3760, which is approximately, not quite, but almost two cents lower than the no new revenue rate. This would have maintained the same budget and avoided additional debt. The facts are the facts. I'm not here to be emotional. The math says that their actions are the direct cause of why we have an increase this year. Now, I don't want to be a complainer without proposing some solutions. I think that's important. So, I have two. Can't go into all the details of them. I'd love to share those with you at some other time, but essentially, we could tweak the account review procedures at the appraisal district, and also, we could create a citizen-led committee that interfaces with the county auditor and the Budget Office. committee that interfaces with the county auditor and the budget office during the budget development process. Either one of these ideas, if adopted, would provide an extra layer of oversight, ensuring the integrity of our budget while maintaining taxpayer trust through transparency. Again, I just want to thank all of y'all for your time and service, and if y'all would like to hear anything more about my proposals, I would love to speak with y'all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so that ends the public portion. We will consider and take action on Agenda Ibs three through twenty-one. Number three is approval requested for acceptance of grant award for specialty court grant Drug Court FY 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is approval of the following job description.
Move approval A.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is adoption of the county budget for fiscal year ending September 30, 2025.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is resolution.
Wait, I have amendments for number five.
Okay, let me read the resolution, twenty-four seventeen, levy on a tax rate for.
Wait, we need to go back to number five and read the amendment.
I have amendments.
Okay.
I have a bunch of amendments. What I'm proposing is, I'm going to have to read them all, but you have some amendments as well.
And then after the amendments are read, that's when the motion needs to be redone.
So there are amendments to that budget that need to be brought forward. First is, let me see, okay, reallocation of the funds appropriate accounts, and this will be a motion, reallocation of the funds and appropriate accounts by decreasing Commissioners' Court capital contingency by fifty-five thousand and increasing Commissioners' Court capital outlay by the same amount to upgrade the agenda software.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Judge, for the benefit of the folks who are listening here, I think it's important that we let them know that we all had the opportunity. We received all these amendments in email. We didn't discuss them, but this is not something that's brand-new. We've all looked at these before, and so there's not going to be a whole lot of deliberation or debate on it.
Right. I mean, anybody, anybody on the court who felt like there was a need to add or subtract something from the budget had that opportunity. You're exactly right, Commissioner. So the second is to recognize revenue in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and increase in contingency by one twenty-six one fourteen. This will increase the Texas Indigent Commission grant by one hundred and twenty-six thousand one fourteen.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. And this is to take care of some grant money that's actually coming in. It really doesn't add anything or subtract anything to our budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number three is create an assistant veterans officer, part-time, group seventeen, step two in the veteran services. This will decrease the general fund contingency by thirty-two thousand three hundred and eight dollars and increase salary wages by twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and increase benefits by six thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. This will increase the veteran service budget by thirty-two thousand three hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
For a second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion made seconded. So this is to, to, our Veterans Service Officer has done a great job. And there's well over nine thousand veterans in Brazos County that she's dealing with on a timely basis. There's actually about thirty-eight hundred that are associated with Texas A&amp;M. This part-time position would allow, I mean, the workload's there no matter what, but if A&amp;M allows a satellite office to be located out there on campus, it would then give the ability out there for those veterans who are associated with Texas A&amp;M to be able to access that on campus. But whether that position ends up out there or whether it ends up here, the workload's here. It's necessary, and if we're going to take care of veterans, that's what we need to do.
That's right.
I think we've got a motion seconded.
Yes, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. I think you.
Yeah, just, I'm proposing basically for the, for the District Attorney's Office, their chief administrative executive assistant, to have her salary increased to eighty thousand dollars, and for constables, the chief deputies to ninety-two five and deputies to eighty-two five. And since there are multiple precincts and constables and deputies, we're going to have to go through a bunch of them, so.
Commissioner, I'm a little confused. You said DA?
Speak up, speak up.
The District Attorney.
Yeah, okay.
Their administrative assistant.
Okay.
To go to eighty thousand.
Didn't remember talking about the constables.
Well, the constables too.
Okay, you're giving the whole, the whole nine yards.
All of it in front.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, so my motion is to increase Position B one five nine nine one, chief deputy constable precinct one from group twenty-five, step seven, to chief deputy constable salary range with max salary of ninety-two five thousand, ninety-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct one's division salary and wages by five thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, increase benefits.
Commissioner, we need to go back to amendment number four and read it specific to the green.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Well, let's go back to amendment number four. Motion to increase Position B zero four two three dash one, administrative assistant from group twenty-two, step six, to group twenty-two, step ten. This will increase the District Attorney's division salary and wages by seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars, increase benefits by one thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by nine thousand five hundred and three dollars.
So move.
So I second that.
You need a second.
Didn't this need a second?
Okay, motion made seconded. And I mean, this, what this does is then brings the District Attorney's administrative assistant up to a level that's to what's comparable for other administrative assistants.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I apologize, Commissioner, because I thought we were going to vote on each of these amendments specifically and separately.
I think we have to. Yeah, we have to. So we have to go through all the constables and offices, and so this is, motion to increase Position B one five nine nine dash one, chief deputy constable precinct one from group twenty-five, step seven, to chief deputy constable salary range with a maximum salary of ninety-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct number one division salary and wages by five thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, increase benefits by one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second, motion seconded. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I appreciate this, and this will also apply to the other amendments that are coming up because.
Yes, I have to read another sixteen of these.
The desire, I think the desire here is to have a comparable compensation for people who have comparable duties within Brazos County, even though they are not in the same department. And I think that this is what was possible to get done, but I think there's more to do.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
None motion carries.
Budget amendment six, motion to increase B, Position B one six oh three dash one, deputy constable one from group twenty-two, step ten, to deputy constable salary range with a maximum salary of eighty-two five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct one division salary and wages by two thousand twenty-seven dollars, increase benefits by five hundred and thirty dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Budget amendment, yeah, budget amendment number seven, increase Position B one six oh three dash two, deputy constable precinct one from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. This will increase the constable precinct one's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by five thousand and seventy-four dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number eight, I think we're about halfway through here. Motion to increase Position B one six oh three dash three, deputy constable precinct one from group twenty-two, step ten, to deputy constable salary range with a maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct one's division salary and wages by two thousand and twenty-seven dollars, increase benefits by five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number nine, motion to increase Position B one six one eight dash one, chief deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-five, step seven, to chief deputy constable salary range with a maximum salary of ninety-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct two's division salary and wages by five thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, increase benefits by one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number ten, motion to increase Position B one six one seven dash one, deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary range with a maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct two's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by five thousand seventy-four dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number eleven, motion to increase Position B one six one seven dash two, deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-two, step nine, to group, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct two's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by five thousand seventy-four dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number twelve, motion to increase Position B one six one seven dash three, deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-two, step ten, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct two's division salary and wages by two thousand twenty-eight dollars, increase benefits by five hundred and thirty dollars, and decrease general fund and contingency by two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number thirteen, motion to increase Position B one six one seven dash four, deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct two division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by five thousand seventy-four dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number fourteen, motion to increase Position B one six one seven dash five, deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-two, step ten, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct two's division salary and wages by two thousand twenty-eight dollars, increase benefits by five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
We're moving along. Amendment number fifteen, motion to increase B one six one seven dash six, deputy constable precinct two, from group twenty-two, step ten, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable two, precinct two's division salary and wages by two thousand twenty-eight dollars, increase benefits by five hundred and thirty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment sixteen, motion to increase Position B one six oh one dash one, chief deputy constable precinct three, from group twenty-five, step nine, to chief deputy constable salary with a maximum salary range of two thousand, ninety-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct three's division salary and wages by one thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars, increase benefits by three hundred and seventy-six dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment seventeen, motion to increase Position B one six one ten dash one, deputy constable precinct three, from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct three's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general contingency by five thousand seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number eighteen, motion to increase Position B one six one ten dash two, deputy constable precinct three, from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct three's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by five thousand seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number nineteen, motion to increase Position B one six one ten dash three, deputy constable precinct three, from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct three's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty-three dollars, increase benefits by one thousand fifty-one dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by five thousand seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Okay, amendment number twenty, we're getting to constable precinct number four now. Increase position, motion to increase Position B one six oh nine dash one, chief deputy constable precinct four, from group twenty-five, step six, to chief deputy constable salary range with max salary of ninety-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct four's division salary and wages by seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, increase benefits by two thousand hundred, two thousand eighty-eight, two thousand eighty-eight dollars, and decrease general fund contingency by ten thousand seventy-six dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries.
Amendment number twenty-one, motion to increase Position B one six two oh dash one, deputy constable precinct four, from group twenty-two, step nine, to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of eighty-two thousand five hundred. This will increase the constable precinct four's division salary and wages by four thousand twenty- This will increase the constable precinct four's division salary and wages by $4,023, increase benefits by $1,050, and decrease general fund contingency by $5,073.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Amendment number twenty-two. Motion increase position B 1620-2, deputy constable precinct four from group twenty-two, step eleven to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of 82,500. This will increase the constable precinct four's division salary and wages by $9, increase benefits by $2, and decrease general fund contingency by $11.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Amendment number twenty-three. Motion to increase position B 1620-3, deputy constable precinct four from group twenty-two, step nine to deputy constable salary range, max salary of 82,500. This will increase the constable precinct four's division salary and wages by $4,023, increase benefits by $1,051, and decrease general fund contingency by $5,074.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Amendment number twenty-four. Motion to increase position B 1620-4, deputy constable precinct four, group twenty-two, step nine to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of 82,500. This will increase the constable precinct four division salary and wages by $4,023, increase benefits by $1,051, and decrease general fund contingency by $5,074.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Amendment number twenty-five. Motion to increase position B 1620-5, deputy constable four, precinct four from group twenty-two, step nine to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of 82,500. This will increase the constable precinct four's division salary and wages by $4,023, increase benefits by $1,050, and decrease general fund contingency by $5,073.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries.
Okay, and we come to the final amendment, amendment number twenty-six. A motion to increase position B 1620-6, deputy constable precinct four from group twenty-two, step nine to deputy constable salary range with maximum salary of 82,500. This will increase the constable precinct four division salary and wages by $4,023, increase benefits by $1,052, and decrease general fund contingency by $5,075.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I just want to thank our constables and chief deputies. These salary increases are really modest, and it gets them into a salary range that's more reasonable for the work they do, and I appreciate the work they do, so I'm happy to have made these motions.
I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Berry, and I thank you for making, bringing those amendments to us.
I think you ought to look into audible and narrating books. Very relaxing, very calming.
That's my second, that's my second option here.
Very calming, relaxing moment in a meeting there before.
Thank you for all of this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This is about the audible? This was a motion about the audible?
The motion, I think, was about the entry.
The motion was to accept the budget, the amendments.
All right. That concludes number, well, let's see, we need to pass the whole budget. This with, including.
With amendments.
Yeah.
Adoption, I move adoption of the budget with amendments.
Second. Motion made seconded to approve the budget with these amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Okay, now we're ready to go on to number six.
Judge, let me just clarify my vote against the budget. I believe that this is a fair representation of what we need to do, but since the public reporting that comes out in the budget says that you voted for the budget means that you voted for the tax rate. And I know that they're two separate issues, and they're two separate motions, actually three separate ones for the tax rate, but the way it appears, you have to vote against the entire budget to vote against the tax rate the way it's publicly presented. That's why I voted against the budget.
I'm sorry, I hear you say, no, that you did not vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I raised my hand.
Okay, I've already did.
Yeah.
All right, so now we'll move to number six. Resolution 24-017, levying a tax rate for Brazos County for the tax year 2024.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.419700, which is effectively a 6.21% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I don't want to go into it much again, but I did present information when we were doing the budget that this budget could be, because we, that we don't spend what we budget by a substantial amount, and the fact that we're going to finish this year with a very large general fund surplus, once again, that we could fully fund this budget by using reserves, and based on our prior 10 years spending expenses, spending records, that we could balance this budget and fully fund it without having to increase taxes, and that's why I proposed a no new revenue rate.
Okay, so.
We have a motion and a second.
We do have a motion and a second. So let me, let me kind of run through what I see is, is the counter to that. The, I mean, we've, we talked a lot about fund balance, and we talked a lot about, and there's, it seems to have become a negative connotation to have fund balance. I don't agree with that. But the fund balance that we've had, we had, fund balance is only fund balance as long as it's in that fund balance department. Once it's included into the budget, it's no longer fund balance, it's a part of the budget. And so, when we started the process of this year, there was $90 million in fund balance. This budget that's proposed has zero fund balance. It, and, and of that 90 million, 75 million was for capital projects, which in my opinion is where you should be using fund balance, capital projects, and there's a lot of capital projects out there that, and there's more that are going to need to get done, but right now, we've, as you work through the process of capital projects, it may take two to three years to actually get that to the point of getting a contract, to get something done. And so that's what we're working on, and that's why we've been building fund balance. So at, when this budget, this proposed budget brings it down to zero, so 75 of the 90 million is for capital, 15, more or less, is for maintenance and operations. And I want to say that again, 15 million of that, that fund balance is to, to balance the budget for maintenance and operations. So what does that mean? That means that the tax rate is not producing enough money to balance the budget. It takes fund balance. And when you get down to zero, and that's where, that's where we're at at the end of this, right now, now, I know that there's some projections that there'll be some more come in, but, but when you get down to zero, you don't have fund balance to balance the budget next year. So next year, we'll start out with, with a $15 million deficit because we don't have the fund balance. Now, there could be, I know that there's close to $10 million projected in new property and, and then, of course, this, this tax rate, but we're using up that tax rate, all but about a million and a half to also, it took that 15 million, and that didn't balance the budget, we raised the, the tax rate a penny, and it took probably 7 million out of that 10 million that it produces, that penny's going to produce close to 10 million, and it takes about 7 million to actually balance the budget. So, so where we're going to be at next year is that we're going to be, the 15 million will not be there, there may be 10, and we're going to be short again. We're going to be short again with, with money to balance the budget because there's no fund balance. Now, there may be 10 million, 12 million in fund balance, but that'll only go toward that 15 million short, that if we're short this year, we're going to be short next year. And then if you look at a 4% inflation rate, 4% of, you know, 162 million is 7 million and something. That's how much shorter you're going to be in next year's budget. If you're not planning ahead and looking at all those things, you're going to be way behind. And that's what I've been trying to say for a good while. It's not just, you know, well, revenue is this, and tax rate's that, and we should have it. I will tell you, it's just, there's more to it than that, and when, when there's no fund balance there, to be able to balance, this year we had it, or we didn't, we didn't have enough, we only had 15, and we really needed 22. It's, it's that penny that makes it up. Next year, it's, it's totally different because we'll have that, we won't have that, and so I, frankly, I believe next year we'll be looking at another tax increase, maybe another penny, that produces close to $10 million, that may get us close. There is justification for what the proposed budget and the proposed tax rate. Now, we may not spend it all, and that's been Commissioner Aldridge's, his contention is we don't spend it all, so we shouldn't have to budget for it, but frankly, I believe you should budget for what you.
Let me correct that, I didn't say we don't budget for it.
Hold on, I'm not through yet.
I said we should budget for it.
I think we ought to let the judge speak.
Yeah, okay. I just, I don't like statements being made that I have said something.
I think you're interrupting the judge.
Okay.
So, I, I think the proposed budget with a penny tax increase will, will help us not have to raise two or more cents next year. If we don't raise it a penny this year to balance this budget, then we have to go back and slash what's in the budget. I'm just, that's, frankly, that's what it is. You'll have to slash what's in the budget, and, you know, whether it's roads, or law enforcement, or plenty of other things, you'll have to slash it. There are, there's, when you, as we move forward, that there's another court, to be in the courthouse, that if, if we're not preparing for that, they don't have the space right now, so we need to be able to move some people out of the courthouse to be able to make that space available. That's part of what's going to happen over there at that 101 building, is it will move some, two departments, three departments out of the courthouse to allow the courthouse to be remodeled for that, that future court, and I will tell you that I believe there's going to be a need for another county court at law. The workload's there, I believe it's going to happen, I think we'll have to be going to the legislature and asking for, for that to be put in. There are plenty of things that, that need to happen. I mean, I'll give you another example, road and bridge for roads. We have now seal-coded most of the roads that we could get right away to get those roads done. We're really down to roads that there may be a landowner, or two, or a dozen, that refuse to get paid for their right of way, they do not want to give it up, and so if we're going to fix these roads, then it's probably going to have to go to eminent domain. The, and the problem part of that is, is that someone, a developer, puts a subdivision in on one of those roads, and then you've got, instead of having, you know, half a dozen people on the road, you've got.